Thank you for being here with us tonight at this regular meeting of the Westerville Board of Education. It's great to see all of you here. Really appreciate the opportunity to get a chance to say thank you to a number of the people who are here this evening. But before we get to that, we need to call this evening's meeting to order. Would you please call the roll? Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. French?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on in the agenda to item three, the board meeting minutes, and this is discussion of approval of the minutes of the Board of Education meeting from Monday, September the 8th. We do not have a motion and a vote on these minutes. Are there questions, concerns, or corrections from the board? I hear none, so we'll move on to item four, which is what the majority of you are here for. District highlights and recognitions this evening. We have two really great recognitions tonight, and I'm going to turn this over to the Vice President of the Board, Tracy Davidson.
Sorry, my back is to everyone. This is one of the best parts of being a school board member, getting to recognize our students, our staff, and our schools. Tonight, we are honoring Vietnam Veterans of America Educator of the Year Scott Gray, Social Studies Teacher at North High School. Mr. Gray, will you please join me at the podium? I'd also like to ask Joseph Jennings, Vietnam Veterans of America National Service Officer, and Clifford Riley, Vietnam Veterans of America State Council President, to join us, too. So I'll read this, and then I'll turn it over to you guys, okay? Okay. Certificate of Accommodation from the Board and the Superintendent to Scott Gray. Psychology AP World History Teacher at Westerville North High School, Educator of the Year, Vietnam Veterans of America. We congratulate you for this remarkable achievement and thank you for bringing honor and distinction to our school district and community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
I would like to read the citation that we're presenting to Mr. Gray.
Vietnam Veterans of America, Buckeye State Council, 2014, Educator of the Year Scott Gray, for your vision of building young Americans presented by then-President Thomas Burke on May 10, 2014, at our state convention. There you are, sir.
City Schools PTAs, PTOs, boosters, and support groups, and presented them at a board meeting. This year, the Board decided we would like to celebrate each of you and thank you for your time, talent, energy, and passion you give to the children of our district. We are grateful for this partnership and see the positive impact it is having, not just with the students and staff, but with pride in our district that resonates within our community. I'd like to ask current Parent Council President Lisa O'Quinn and last year's Parent Council President Chris Dilly to please join me. I'm going to read the resolution to you, too. Okay? The Resolution of Accommodation for Westerville Parent Council. Whereas, the Westerville Parent Council was formed 12 years ago to unite PTAs, PTOs, and booster groups within the Westerville City School District in order to share information, empower families, and celebrate students, staff, and volunteers. Whereas, since its inception, tireless Parent Council members have enhanced the educational experience of our children, our staff. Last year alone, logged more than 9,900 volunteer hours. And whereas, Parent Council facilitates a yearly PTA Reflections competition, which celebrates creativity and encourages students to pursue their artistic interests. And whereas, Parent Council partnered with Rousch Honda to create the coveted Gem Award, which boosts morale throughout our district by shining a spotlight on exceptional employees and volunteers. And whereas, Parent Council also organizes Summer Camp and Activities Expo to help families find places where their children can continue to learn and excel when school is not in session. Whereas, Parent Council has also partnered with GFS Marketplace to offer generous college scholarships to help deserving seniors pursue their post-high-school goals. Therefore, be it resolved that Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent commend the members of Westerville Parent Council for its volunteering their time, talents, and betterment of students and staff in the Westerville City School District. Thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Diane. Next, I'd like to welcome each organization's president one at a time to receive their certificate. But I've also been told that you guys are changing things up, and some of you aren't here and have switched names, so just bear with me. Please. Suzanne McConaughey from Alcott Elementary School PTA.
Her dad had a heart attack, but he's doing fine.
Oh.
He's okay, so she won't be here.
Would someone like to accept it? Okay. That would be fantastic. Julie Welch, Ann Hurst Elementary School PTA. Erin Foster, Charrington Elementary School PTA. Leslie Walden, Emerson Magnet Elementary School PTA. Erica Ware is accepting on behalf of Jill Patterson, Faust Elementary School PTO. Stacy Keenan, Hanby Magnet Elementary School PTA. Alice Hoole, Hawthorne Elementary School PTO. Kristen Cowzer, Huber Ridge Elementary School PTA. Kristen Buckley, Mark Twain Elementary School PTA. Vicki Rice, McVeigh Elementary School PTA. Linda Flynn, Point View Elementary School PTA. Megan Anzer, Robert Frost Elementary School PTA. Andrew Tinkum, Whittier Elementary School PTA. Kevin Bartholomew, Wilder Elementary School PTA. Jen Share, ELC Preschool PTA. Lisa O'Quinn and Elizabeth Bowden, accepting on behalf of Beth Mulick, Blendon Middle School PTO. Carrie Trustley, accepting on behalf of Gail Stewart, Genoa Middle School PTSA. Robin Pryfogle, accepting on behalf of Trish Garrison, Heritage Middle School PTSA. Kathleen Miller Hubbard, Walnut Springs Middle School PTSA. Joanne Hernke, accepting on behalf of Luanne Divenzo, Central Academic Boosters. Rob Rothney, Central Athletic Boosters. Frank Leone, Central Music Boosters. Charlene Tucker, accepting on behalf of Bobby Lynn Kissin, Central Theater Boosters.
Tracy King, North Academic Boosters.
Dennis Clark, North Athletic Boosters. Chris Volpe, North Music Boosters. Michaela Sampson, accepting on behalf of Amber Nichols, North Theater Boosters. Sherry Blaze, accepting on behalf of Jeanette Tolamo, South Academic Boosters. Lisa Smith, accepting on behalf of Karen Callaway, South Athletic Boosters. Lori Tufts, South Music Boosters. Andy Wilson, South Theater Boosters. Tim Pollan, South IB Fund. Jackie Taylor, accepting on behalf of Von Bell for Westerville African American Parents Association. And Jen Altman, Westerville Partners for Education. (applause) Okay. Lynn would like all of you to go out in the hallway and follow her to have your picture taken. And then you can come back and join all the fun if you would like. I'm sure we'll see you.
They might. They're getting their pictures taken. They're going to get their pictures taken. They can come back after their pictures.
They're not coming back.
I was going to say, if you want to come back.
Yeah. They're not coming back.
That's true. They aren't.
Well, it looks normal.
All right.
Good job.
We'll wait just a second to let everyone make their way out, and I'm assuming that they're all going to come back and listen to the rest of the meeting. Is she in here? Jill Beck? Jill, I want to thank you so much for all of your work in getting everything organized and making sure that everybody was here and checking people in. I know it's a lot of work. Thank you so much.
I spoke with the doctor, and I'll go on the shore now. Cruise ship.
They're all going to have to pull back.
That's right.
I think we can go ahead. You think they're too noisy?
All right. We will go ahead with the meeting at this point in time. Next on the agenda, under Reports, the Superintendent's Report. So I'll turn this over to Dr. Kellogg.
Thank you, President Nestor Baker, and members of the board, and to the few audience members who remain. Thank you for being here. Want to take a minute just to informally thank some folks who helped us in our dealing with the threat situation that occurred at South High School. I guess it's just under two weeks ago tonight. And it was nice to see that despite the negative atmosphere, the threat we were dealing with created at that school, the positive response of so many people helped us, A, I think, maintain a safe and secure environment for kids and staff, and continue moving along for the school year and not let it become more of a distraction. I can tell you that there were times when we were meeting and talking, and we talked about worst-case scenarios, where the hair in the back of your neck kind of goes up as you get worried about what this could be, both in terms of whether or not the threat was actually credible and someone might follow through on it, as well as how staff and students and parents might respond to the knowledge of the threat, either of which can send things in a spiraling direction real quickly. So to our administrative team, both at Westerville South and here at the district office, hats off, our job well done. Their coordination, their communication, their reliance on Emergency Response Manual that we have in place was stellar. I'd give five stars for that work. To our local law enforcement and their response and their support of what we were doing at the time, and their advice, particularly as it came to analyzing the threat and going through a process of what we call threat analysis, part of our process, to determine what our response is going to be. They were invaluable and all that. And then their presence, both in terms of while we were dealing with it and the days following the date of the threat, I think was really helpful. To the students, big A-plus. They were engaged in discussions with us. They were helpful to us. They kept their heads about them and kept walking through the day and the days that this was going on in a manner that helped keep a lid on things. And really, they're kind of the key to this whole thing because their response drives everything else. And to the parents who showed confidence in our response, we've got a lot of anecdotal positive feedback from parents thanking us for our response. We really appreciate that because, again, they're really critical taught-out. It just takes a lot of players. Our Communication Department did an outstanding job, working with Mr. Anderson, with staff, getting communication to staff and the students and the parents and the community overall. So it's kind of a, unfortunately, it's kind of a real-life test run of your emergency response system, and I thought we did a pretty good job. Couple pieces to that. The week following that, I had my three Superintendent's Advisory Meetings with students, and one of the topics on the table was what'd they think. And they were really good. One of the things they said, which was really critical, they said, you know, "Dr. Kellogg, as we talked to our teachers and we watched our teachers, the manner, their response to the situation," and this is what the South students said, and the North and Central students said the same kind of thing, that, yeah, one of the things you do as a student, you kind of look at the staff and how they're responding. And their level of comfort and their sense of security does a lot for bringing us a sense of security, the open conversation about what's going on. So that was a big help. The second piece is that thing about relationships. As we talked with the students, and they acknowledged it, too, most of these heinous situations that happen in schools or other kinds of public places rarely come from written or phoned-in threat. There's the old adage, bombers never call, callers never bomb, right? And the students were talking about that, and what we all engage in discussion, the students were really good about bringing this forward, saying, you know, what's really critical is for them as a student body, and if one of them might happen to listen to this, put it out on Twitter or something, but their awareness of the students around themselves, their friends and their buddies, and who might be displaying behaviors or concerns that need to be addressed, that they don't think are being addressed by adults, that's the critical piece. And the students recognize that. They know what's happened in other situations. And when they process it, they say, you know, in most situations, there's a bunch of students who kind of know what's going on, and when they bring that to adult attention, then the response systems can act the right way, and that's a good thing. And they all report that they feel very comfortable, that they know who the adults are in their building they can go talk to when those situations happen, that they feel if they do that, the right response is going to happen and their safety is going to be enhanced. And so that awareness and that relationships. And I was struck, I wish I knew who the mom was. Mr. Hersheiser and I were standing out front of South High School that Monday morning. Mom pulled up in a minivan, and two young ladies popped out of the van. As they're grabbing the book bags, mom says to them, "Be smart today and pay attention to who's around you and what's going on." Right? Was it you? Sounds like you. Sounds exactly like something you would say as a good mom. So, you know, it just reminded day in and day out. I mean, that's good advice if you drop them off at Easton. That's good advice if you're dropping off at Polaris Mall. That's good advice if you're dropping off at a Friday night football game. That's good advice if you're dropping off at some friend's party. That's just good advice, all right, for all of us. And so, again, thank you to all, so many people who did such great work in helping us get through that. Hopefully, we don't have anything like that again in the near future. For those that think that the age of those kinds of pranks and disruptions are okay, I'm here to tell you, you don't want to be in that, you don't want to be at the receiving end of what happens when you do because the laws have changed, public awareness has changed, and the response to those kinds of situations that 30 years ago might have had a lesser response. The young people who make those mistakes today, even as a hoax, find themselves in a whole lot of hot water that they really didn't anticipate, and that concerns me. The second one is, it also concerns me because it is evidence that there's a young person out there who's in pain and might need help, and it's a message to us. So as we move forward, again, kudos to everybody who did that work. Hopefully, we keep that out of mind, and we don't have any more of those to deal with in the near future. So just wanted to take some time to share that this evening, and if the Board has questions, I'm happy to take them as well.
Anything for John?
Thank you.
Thank you. And also thanks to everyone involved for the way it was handled. Item number six on the agenda is public comment. This is our first portion of public comment, and the first portion of public comment is reserved for comments about things that are on the agenda for action. And we do have one speaker signed up to speak, and she will have five minutes to speak, and that is Louise Reese.
Good evening. I have a couple of statements, questions. I was just wondering if, when you get to your action on these items, if you could spend a little time addressing them. I'd appreciate it. Maybe somebody else would. Under appropriations, when you're talking about, we're seeing in the appropriations a decrease, or what appears to be a decrease, in spending under permanent improvements and also under uniform school supplies. And I would appreciate it if you could expand your explanation as to why we might be seeing decreases in those areas, if that's the case. Under Personnel Consent Agenda, you list a one-time payment increase of $95 due to a teacher attending additional day of training for the Lead the Way for Health and Advanced Manufacturing Pathways teachers. And my question there is, is this training cost eligible or being paid by the grant dollars, or is this coming out of another fund from the district? Is this separate or additional funding above what the buildings are allocated for professional development, if that makes sense? Under the Personnel Consent Agenda, employment for licensed employees, what fund pays for the athletic events assistance that you have listed there? I wasn't able to track that back. And other contract positions that you have listed there? And it wasn't clear to me, maybe it is to others, and I would appreciate a little more explanation on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Those are easily dealt with. And as we move toward answering some of those questions, we move on in the agenda at item 7.01, which is the Resolution to Approve the Financial Reports and Investments for August of this year. And with that, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second. Bart?
Madam President, members of the board, for the financial reports for the month of August 2014, year-to-date receipts, excuse me, month-to-date receipts for the general fund only are $16,727,000. Year-to-date receipts for the general fund is $59,423,000. Year-to-date expenditures for the general fund is $21,616,000. We have an unencumbered fund balance of $69,103,000. For all funds, year-to-date receipts is $70,378,000. Year-to-date expenditures are $28,870,000, and the unencumbered fund balance is $90,276,000.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none. The roll, please.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The August financial reports and investments have been approved. Moving on to 7.02, this is the final appropriations for fiscal year 2015, and this is the second reading, so this is the evening that we do vote on this. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, I'm going to ask Mr. Griffith if he will do a brief recap and address a couple of the questions that were raised, and then, of course, any questions or comments or concerns from the board.
Madam President, members of the board, to recap, this appropriations resolution has to be approved before October 1st of every year. We did do a presentation on this last month. The appropriations are done for all funds, not just general fund. If you remember, we did a temporaries in June to allow us the chance to expend money or the approval to expend money until this point. The appropriations for this fiscal year 2015 for the general fund is $150,253,000. The total, all funds, is $211,249,235. To answer the question, Ms. Adams had about the OO3 fund. I may ask her to email me. The OO3 fund appropriations this year are identical, unless I'm looking at the wrong one, to last year. So I'll have to look and make sure. I know we did temporaries, and I got to make sure which report I'm looking at. OO3 last year, well, last year we did, the annual appropriations were $11 million. This year, we did $10,827. We typically appropriate, I won't say every penny that we have, we try to be close to what we had the year before, just because it may show less, about $167,000. That's just because we didn't basically have it appropriated to spend all that amount last year. I mean, the money was available, $11 million was appropriated, but we actually, when it came down to it, we only appropriated $2827,000. So I won't say that there's a decrease in expenditures. I guess it'd be safe to say there's a decrease in what we actually spent last year versus what we have actually appropriated this year. With Mr. LaRose, we added some funds to his account last year from the general fund. I know he can certainly use everything we can throw at him as far as repairs and stuff going on. So those numbers could change throughout the year. I know the board had talked about maybe adding some more. I know I had asked Mr. LaRose to give us a list of what he actually had to have versus what would it be, what would it be nice to have if we had the funds for. So I'm certainly, in the capital plan he's viewing now, he may come back and ask to have more money in the general fund. The permanent improvement is limited specifically. In other words, if we wanted to give him another $1 million in the OO3, we couldn't do it because there's not enough money collected to do that. That's a finite tax levy. The general fund, just like we did last year, we gave him extra money for the speakers and the audio and some of the gymnasiums and some of the other equipment. So in the permanent improvement fund itself, like I said, we did appropriate a little less this year than we did it last year, but that's just the way we did it. Jeff certainly could have used it, it's just that we didn't actually need it all last year as far as in that fund because we gave him some of the general fund and different issues. And I didn't hear the rest of the questions. I wasn't quite sure if they were. I was trying to write that one down. Listen to you guys.
Uniform school supplies.
Uniform school supplies are OO9 accounts. That's basically fee money. I guess if I look at the comparison from last year, it's basically on what the fees are collected every year by the students, and those monies can only be spent on expenditures for students. And basically, last year, we appropriated $327,000. This year, we appropriated $165,000. One of the things we did this year is we changed the fee structure of what we were having the kids pay in fees. We picked up more of the workbook fees this year versus last year, so we actually charged them less. So we appropriate less. Again, all this money, this money is supposed to be money in, money out. If we charge $5 for fees, we should be spending $5 for fees. So we did appropriate less this year than we did last year, only because we charged the kids less this year than we did last year. What else was there?
That was it for you.
That was it for me?
Yeah.
Again, you guys are passing a resolution. It's not part of this presentation, but we actually certify the revenue to the county auditor as well, so that he makes sure that no matter what we're appropriating to all these various funds, we actually have the revenue to back that up. We have to certify that, as well as the Board President, the Superintendent, myself, also certify what's called the 412 certificate. We have to sign that as part of this as well, that we'll submit to cover those documents to make sure that we're certifying to the county auditor that we do have the money to pay for these appropriations.
In other words, we can't run on credit, and we can't run in the red. And I do think it's worth noting on the uniform school supplies piece, and Louise, I am glad that you brought that up because it is something we needed to mention, the fact that that is lower in amount is...
are collected every year by the students, and those monies can only be spent on expenditures for students. And basically, last year, we appropriated three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, this year, we appropriated one hundred and sixty-five. One of the things we did this year is we changed the fee structure of what we were having the kids pay in fees. We picked up more of the workbook fees this year versus last year, so we're, so we actually charged them less. So, we appropriate less, was we, again, all this money, this money is supposed to be money in, money out. If we charge five dollars for fees, we should be spending five dollars for fees. So, we did appropriate less this year than we did last year, only because we charged the kids less this year than we did last year. What else was there?
That was it for you.
That was it for me?
Yeah.
Again, you guys are passing a resolution. It's not part of this presentation, but we actually certify the revenue to the county auditor as well, so that he makes sure that no matter what we're appropriating to all these various funds, we actually have the revenue to back that up. We have to certify that, as well as the board president, the superintendent, myself, also certify what's called the four twelve certificate. We have to sign that as part of this as well, that we'll submit to cover those documents to make sure that we're certifying to the county auditor that we do have the money to pay for these appropriations.
In other words, we can't run on credit, and we can't run in the red. And I do think it's worth noting on the uniform school supplies piece, and Louise, I am glad that you brought that up, because it is something we needed to mention, the fact that that is lower in amount is good news for our families and our students, because it does indicate very clearly that the district has stepped up and charged students less. So, it's another bit of evidence of recovery within the district. Comments or questions?
Bart, just for clarification on the, let me scroll back up here, make sure I get the right code. The OO three permanent improvement fund, I see the reference to chapter fifty-seven oh five, the revised code, which is specific to tax levies. So, this is a fund that can only be filled by a specific tax levy that is generating revenue and placing it in that account, correct?
That's correct. This is only tax dollars. Unlike the general fund, we have tax dollars, we have state foundation dollars.
Right.
This is a, this is a tax that was levied.
All right. Thank you.
It might help me to understand a little bit, and I, just, really, just for understanding, the whole certified process of the appropriations, that's a state?
This is a state mandate, and I got an email back. Everything that we do appropriation has to be audited. The auditors will look at this audit, they'll look at the certification to make sure you had the revenue to certify that. That's all mandated by what the state says you have to do. It's in the revised code. It tells you when you have to do it and how you have to do it. It's nothing that our board policy, our board policy is there for other things to help maintain some of that, but the majority of it is a revised code that says, here's what you will do and when you will do it and how you will do it.
So, this is a bit of the Ohio revised code that we like?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to emphasize that.
It keeps, it keeps, it keeps, well, it keeps you, the taxpayer, safe to make sure that your money has to be spent in accordance with state law.
Yeah. I think that's a great thing, and we don't often say that.
Right. This is, this is a good thing.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
I do want to, I forgot one more thing, going back to Louise's questions about the, Louise's questions about appropriations. It is possible that as we move through this fiscal year, you will see some changes as regards the general fund expenditures on permanent improvements. So, stay tuned for that. As Bart said, we have asked Mr. LaRose to come forward with some ideas. We do know that there are needs, and we're looking at how best to take care of some of those needs. So, expect to see some change as we move through the year. The roll, please.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The final appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen have been approved. And we'll move on to the Personnel Consent Agenda this evening. Could I have a motion on the Personnel Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
With thanks. I see Gary is at the podium already, and you can tell us everything that you had planned to tell us, and then either you or Bart at this stage of the game can answer a couple of those questions that were asked.
Okay. I think I can address a couple of them, and at the conclusion of the meeting, if Mrs. Reese would hang around, we'll chat in case there's something I miss, okay? Or Mr. Griffith can take care of it, he's got all the money. So, I would like to, would like to draw your attention to the Personnel Consent Agenda. In section eight oh, or eight point oh one, there are four classified resignations. These four folks are resigning their current positions in the school district to take other positions. In the next section, eight point oh two, the resignations for home instruction tutors, this is kind of a cleanup process, comes from special education, they update the list of homebound tutors. The folks listed here as resigned have not participated in the program for a period of time, and they have checked with these people, and they no longer want to participate. So, that's why we have them listed as resigned. The folks that have the PAP designation are classified folks, and that's pupil activity permit, is what the PAP indicates. Also, in that section, there's one resignation from a gentleman, the diving coach at North and South High School. Section eight point oh three, change of assignment in classified. The first person listed there is moving to a different area of responsibility, staying at the same building, but she's moving from cafeteria per se to the satellite operation. Contract moves from one eighty-one days to one hundred and eighty-eight days. The next change of assignments, temporary, these are all temporary designations for various reasons, sometimes illness, sometime people are transitioning to other positions, so these people fill in and work for them for the amount of time that's listed. We have a couple of corrections, the dates, not the days of work, but the days, you'll see those two folks listed, September second to the fifth, and September second to the fifth as well. And that's basically, not a change of days, it's just a correction with the dates that they worked. Under contractual status change, section eight point oh four, you will see bus drivers listed on both pages. Most of this has to do with either the bidding process or a minor change in their current route. We use electronic routing system. Sometimes, we find that there's a number of kids that may have moved in at one place, and instead of having X number of stops with X number of kids, now they have a few more stops with a few more kids and so forth. So, most of that is reflected due to changes of schedules and a few changes of routes. In the next section, Student Council Adjustment Changes, this is from step one to step two, step one to step three. It's my understanding, these people are coming back to these supplementals, and this is an adjustment for the experience that they've had in the past. Under the next section, the one-time payment, which was questioned earlier, this is paying this person for an additional day of training, the ninety-five dollars, and this comes from professional development dollars. Okay? So, again, just changing the date and adding another day of training to this person. Section eight point oh seven, some classified employments. The first one is a student worker, which basically, it's my understanding, these folks work on a tech crew in the auditorium and do some work like that. And the other folks are substitute recess aid, substitute bus driver. And you may see in the beginning where Mr. Hunt resigned as a bus driver, he's assuming a new position in transportation, and at various times in the evening and weekends, he may be serving as a substitute bus driver on a as-needed basis. Eight point oh eight, supplementals and employments of licensed folks. The athletic event folks, for example, in South High School, I use them as an example. Most of these folks serve as ticket takers. They are on-call, they are not working as a group for every athletic event. You know, depending what the athletic event is, like a football game, I'm sure they probably need more than maybe for, say, I don't know, volleyball game. Not to diminish volleyball, but again, based on the need. But these people are at-will workers when needed, and it's not like they're working on a full-time basis. The next group of supplementals, most of them come from Heritage Middle School. These are on an annual basis, not a seasonal basis, not like fall sports or winter sports, something like this. This is kind of an ongoing thing. And again, more athletic events assistance, ticket takers at the end. Those people for athletic events and ticket takers, it's paid from the athletic funds. Okay? So, the respective schools, that's where the money comes from to cover that. Questions? And as I said, if you have further questions when we're finished, we'll catch up with Mrs. Reese.
Comments or concerns?
Just a comment and a question, maybe, as you've explained in a few of these areas, there's needed to be some corrections.
Exactly.
Have come across to your desk. And so, this is initiated by the principal usually, that's not something, or between your office, that you've caught mistakes or whatever?
It, it could be either. I know there's some situations where we get the recommendations, and if we have questions about them, I can think of one case, we sent a few of them back to the building to be reviewed and corrected. So, the experienced one, I believe that was caught in our office, because like I said, these folks are returning to those supplementals, and they needed to be updated and so forth.
Thank you. Other questions? Hearing none. The roll.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. Item eight, the Personnel Consent Agenda has been approved this evening. Moving on to item nine, policy consent, we have nothing in this category tonight. And under item ten, old business, we have nothing in that category. However, under item eleven, new business tonight, we do have two items. And the first one is the first reading of policy eight-two-one-zero, school calendar. And I'm not asking for a motion and a second on this, because it's first reading. And we'll do a motion and second next time when it comes back, when it does come back for action, all right? And the reason, as Mark makes his way to the podium, the reason that we are looking at this right now, oftentimes, people say, why on earth are you looking at school calendars and school calendar policies when the school year is well underway, but it's a long time till the end of school and so forth? We're looking at this now because it is a necessity for us to do so. We need to bring our policy into accordance with state law. And Mark, I'm not going to take everything that you were going to say, because that would be embarrassing for both of us. So, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Nestor Baker. As you said, policy eighty-two-ten governs the school calendar, and with our relationship and working with Neola, they have sent us some recommended revisions to remain consistent with recent changes in state law. Just a couple of the highlights in the policy. And the main piece, and the next item, you will see that, is moving from school days to hours. It also includes a thirty-day timeframe for a public hearing on the proposed calendar. So, this item will not be back for a second reading at the next agenda, or on the next agenda, it will be back at the end of October. There's also some language on calamity time, and reasserts that school must be in session for a minimum, minimum hours required each year, and those hours vary by grade level. And it also incorporates language, allowing district to submit plans to the state for the use of online lessons or Blizzard bags in the event of excess calamity time. So, this, as you indicated, is a first reading, and those are a couple of the highlights.
Okay. Questions, thoughts, suggested revisions? Anything come to mind at this point in time?
I'll tell you what came to mind, as I read it the first time, I'm thinking, we say hours here, maybe this is not the place on the policy to actually put those hours, but, because the ODE may change them, obviously.
Right.
But we're now at one thousand and one hours at the high school level, correct?
At the high school, yes, one thousand and one.
All right. And it's the last at the elementary, it's nine-something, I think.
Grades one through six are nine hundred and ten, seven through twelve are one thousand and one.
Yes. Is there any particular reason why we wouldn't have those hours in the policy?
The only reason is exactly what you said.
Yes.
Because if ODE changes even by a half an hour or an hour, we would then have to redo our policy.
Would that hurt us?
It probably wouldn't hurt us, and we can think about either putting it in here, or we may want to put it in with the calendar, so that every year, it would update, and, you know, we would be able to update those hours.
What I was thinking is, people will look at our policy, you know, if an average parent looks at the policy, tries to figure out the total number of hours that we're going to have in a year's time at the high school level, for example, and try to, you know, just to know that. There's really no place, unless they go to ODE and get that kind of, under the revised code, to get those particular hours. So, I don't know.
Yeah.
My feeling is...
I think we, let's look at whether we want to put in the policy or where would be most accessible to people, where they would be looking for it, and where we could put that down. Because you're right, everybody says, well, there are one hundred and eighty days in school. We say, well, we're not doing that anymore. We have to look at hours.
Right. It certainly isn't one hundred and eighty days, that's true.
Right.
But if we look at a thousand, if we put the hours there, you know, why just say hours? Which we've changed the wording from days to hours, that's all we've changed, really. But that's, that's just a thought, when I first read it, you know, why not? Sure. Thank you.
Other thoughts or suggestions?
We could put that in guidelines alongside it, and then, parents could find it.
And the guidelines don't have to be approved by us the way the policies do, so. So, we'll talk about where, where makes good sense for that.
Sure.
Anything else before we move on from the first reading? It's one of the easiest policies we'll be dealing with.
Yes.
So, stay there. The next item under new business is the first reading of the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school calendar. And Mark, do you want to address this?
Sure. Thank you again. This item, we are way behind. Typically, we've brought this to the Board of Education for approval a little earlier than what we are today. But due to some of the legislative changes and some of the other things, this item is actually the first reading, which I had indicated in the last one, needs a thirty-day trial or window before the first, between the first reading and the second reading. This calendar, as Dr. French indicated, has the hours in it. Grades one through six must have nine, nine hundred and ten, grades seven through twelve must have one thousand and one, and our kindergarten must have four hundred and fifty-five, that's a half-day kindergarten. The calendar is consistent with recent calendars that we've had with the school year starting the second week of August, first semester being over prior to winter break, and school concluding before Memorial Day, with us continuing to have graduation on Memorial Day weekend. Calendar committee included representatives from each of our employee associations, and as well as people from transportation, testing, and communications. And this is kind of where we are right now. There were, every year, or every few years, there's some odd calendars that make some of the different breaks difficult. This one is not one of them, so this one was a little easier in trying to work with the first day, the end of the first semester, the start of the second semester, and the end of that semester. It does balance the number of days between the first and second semester while looking at testing days that occur in each of those semesters.
One of the things I'd like to add, because every time I look at an August twelfth start date for school, I cringe, although I do like the May end date. And I know there are people who look at that and wonder why we're starting so early. One of the things that makes, in my mind, the biggest difference is when you look at state tests in the spring. So, the later you push that, if you make it the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth, which sounds more comfortable, more summer, it means you've lost five or ten days of instruction towards a fixed date for state assessments. So, kids are going to be sitting at desks taking high-stakes assessments in the spring. Where you start your school day determines how many days you have of direct instruction before the test. And a five or ten-day difference could be, for some kids, a one- or two-point difference on a high-stakes test. So, I've had this discussion with folks, and with a family member, I suggested that if they wanted to lobby the legislators to move the testing later, so we could start school later, I'd be all aboard for that one. But the other thing it does do, and as a former high school, with, I'm a recovering high school principal, take, you're always a recovering high school principal, doing exams before winter break, and, you know, those of us who have high school people at home, exams before winter break's a good thing. And so, it does do that as well. So, those are two things, academic reasons why, although I don't like the twelfth so much, man, it makes sense academically.
Do we admire an opportunity for parents' input before we make this, we finally vote on this in some way, shape, or form, or?
That's the intent of this thirty-day wait period.
Okay.
So, that, there's, there's a public meeting.
Okay.
We'll put out the calendar for people to respond to, that if you want input.
How will they get the information? They're, we're going to send, how will they see this calendar, is what I'm asking.
However the board would like us to do, we'll take, take that lead and make it happen. However, the board would like us to do, we'll take, take that lead and make it happen.
I think it'd be a really good idea. Lynn always puts these pieces in the news from, from the board meeting and so forth. But it would be a good idea if we could make sure at the building level that that is also mentioned.
Will do.
Does it normally go on the website?
Yeah, we would, it will be on the website and then we'll have the buildings say where to get to that. I think that should help. And there'll be a whole lot of people that say, I really don't like that August. All right. We'll move on, and those will return after 30 days. The next item on the agenda is donations. 12.01 on your agenda. Could I have a motion on donations, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion and a second. Everybody wants to say thanks, but are there other comments you'd like to say in addition to thank you?
No. Yes, I think it's very nice. I'm just looking through, and I just briefed it again before I came. And the only thing I can remember are those balls that were donated. And I'm thinking, that's really nice. Somebody donated a couple of soccer balls, was it, to Emerson? And that's very nice that, you know, that parents and groups and organizations think of the little things for the kids that we need too. It doesn't always have to be a big thing, so we appreciate it all. Thank you.
And the variety of types of donations.
Varieties, yes.
Pretty cool.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the donations have been approved this evening. And so we move on to the second portion of public comment. This is item number 13 on your agenda. The second portion of public comment is set aside for items, discussions, comments for the good of the order. And just as with the first portion of public comment, speakers are limited to five minutes. That said, we have one individual signed up to speak tonight. And Ian, I am quite not sure about how to pronounce your last name. This is Ian.
You're not the first, and you won't be the last. It's Ian Slimmon, and I am a parent of a Westerville Central student who's heavily involved in the theater program. And I want to take a moment to thank the board for continuing to support the arts in all of our schools. We're very lucky in this district, and in particular in Central, to have facilities that are popular with the community and civic organizations who want to use our facilities for their own purposes, their own events. This gives us a sense of pride for the school administrators as well as much-needed rental income to the district. However, as we continue to make the school buildings available for these outside organizations, we need to recognize that there are both indirect and indirect costs, which may not always be immediately apparent. For example, and I use this as an example, but this applies to both, to all of our schools and whether this is a sports or arts kind of facility that's being used. But for example, Central has been used, the Central stage has been used for the last two very successful Parks and Recreation Community Theater productions. But these productions put a strain on the building infrastructure. Lighting systems wear out, bulbs blow, and they're not cheap. Other things, other items get broken. And it doesn't seem fair that the cost of those are being picked up by the Central Theater Booster Budget. Now, to the point that was made earlier, there are other appropriations that are going on. So my ask of the board is, would you consider alternate funding processes from the rental, rental revenue for the schools to cover the cost of those building maintenance, for that building maintenance? There are a number of ways that this could be handled, and I don't intend to try and lay a particular one out. One option would be for the schools to have an amount of money set aside to them that they can use, and that will save the need to come back to the district for supplemental funding. Let's say, the examples I have given have been from Central Theater. These apply across all of our school buildings. So knowing that we take pride in the schools, when we see things that break, for whatever reason, are there ways that we can use the rental income to supplement the costs so that the schools and the theater programs or the booster programs are not covering the costs that really weren't incurred by them or the facilities? That's it. Questions, comments?
Thank you very much. That is something definitely worth looking into, and we will further discuss that.
Thank you.
Board comments this evening?
I'm, I'm going to pass.
Okay.
I'm going to start.
Richard, you look like you're going to say something.
Just briefly, and Bart, we can certainly take this offline. I'd be curious in evaluating our rental rates to ensure that we're basing rental rates on cost of recovery for wear and tear and those types of things, that that's baked into rental rates, and it's not just a square footage or a historical rate that we look at to charge for our facilities, just so that we can recoup costs on a, on a per-usage basis. So I think that was a very good call out. But beyond that, nothing else this evening?
Yeah, I have two things. This Friday is 4th Friday, September 26th. It's school days, Uptown, 6:00 to 9:00. And at Hambi, there's going to be the Fab Lab that everyone's been waiting for. So I encourage you to get out and check it out. It's going to be really cool. Secondly, October 4th, Midstates Band Association Invitational is scheduled at Westerville North. And it looks like North and South will both be playing there. And the public actually gets a chance to vote on their favorite band. So it's from 4:00 to 8:30. No, it's not. It's from 12:45 to 8:30 on October 4th. So come and check it out and support our bands. That's it.
Thank you. Rick?
I'd echo Richard's comments about taking a look at the billing usage funds. Really, that's a great, not sure, there he is. Thank you, sir. Thank you for bringing it forward. And Louise, thank you for really digging down into the finances as well. I, I'm going to speak as Legislative Liaison for a second. And I have, I have promised my board members that I will not go, go too long, although, you know, you give a preacher a microphone and there's always difficulties that may entail.
He has multiple pages of paper in front of him.
Yeah, but I'm, but I'm, yeah, okay. All right, all right.
Single space.
But it's 14-point.
Okay.
All kidding aside, we all have legislative, we all have liaison positions. I have not done a Legislative Liaison update before, so I thought that I would dig into that a little bit. And so that I am somewhat concise and kind of on target. I, I did write this out, and I asked my board members, and I would say to the congregation, to the... To the assemblage, to the audience, maybe I'll do this next meeting. But I'm glad for your responses, your, your thoughts as well, pro, con, whatever. Not done this before, so some feedback would be great. Let me read this to you. "As the Board of Education Legislative Liaison, I felt it my duty to learn, dig more deeply into the area of standards, legislative activity and influence. Where do I, and I am speaking just for myself, believe there is appropriate influence and where do I see the need to push back against what we might call overreach? We could get lost in the weeds of this veritable educational vegetable soup of ESEA, which began with President Johnson, then go through NCLB, Straight A, Race to the Top, waivers, and of course, House Bill 2237, 597, two pieces of legislation dealing particularly with this commonly called Common Core. But I really don't want to get down into that, that, into those kind of weeds. I don't want to get lost there because as Legislative Liaison, I want to focus on the classroom, the kids, their present and their future. So let me be clear in a clarification. States adopt standards. Local Board of Educations choose, support, implementation of the curriculum, staff and teachers, form the lessons to meet the needs of the students within their classrooms. In other words, the Common Core Initiative, for example, is a subset of the overall State of Ohio New Learning Standards. Common Core, as you know, only deals with math, English, language arts. It only specifies what students should know at each grade level, describe the skills they must acquire in order to achieve what is called college and career readiness. Individual school districts are responsible for choosing curriculum based on the standards. Our focus, as Board of Education, is keeping our eyes on the classroom and the children. One, are they growing toward college and career readiness? Two, are they developing as citizens who recognize their inherent worth? Again, part of Ohio's standards, this is called Common Core, apply to math and English language arts only. More broadly speaking, Ohio's new learning standards include all areas of study. Science would be another one, for example. While I have reviewed many of the standards, and I am still learning and investigating, and while some of us may be and some of us may not be personally satisfied that these standards do provide a more rigorous learning template, there are two significant areas that if I have dug into this, I would like to see us address so that we can continue to affirm parental input, maintain local control, and reduce the power of, quote, "high-stakes standardized testing." I'd like to see us address so we can affirm parental input, maintain local control, and reduce the power of what is called high-stakes standardized testing. So I'm addressing this now to not only Superintendent Kellogg and his staff, but also to the board members and the community for further discussion. Area number one, community input on a more consistent basis. Perhaps we could or should develop a more robust process for parental and community input for curriculum review and feedback prior to adoption. Current practice does not allow, current practice not allow us, I think, for enough parental and community review and feedback, and I think we can enhance this involvement. While it is true that policy will allow parents to, quote, "opt out" of material that they would deem inappropriate based on family or religious sensibilities, for example, I think we would do well to invite the community into the process for review and feedback upfront. This would allow teachers to be the professional experts that they are in the implementation process while still giving the community a, quote, "place and space" to review and provide feedback. So the one area I'd like to see us address is the, the idea of some community input, involvement, investment in review and feedback prior to adoption curriculum. Number two, this may deal more succinctly or directly to my role as Legislative Liaison. Number two, the rapid-fire pace of implementing the assessments. PARC, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. PARC is what you will hear it called. While PARC does offer online reviews, sample questions, et cetera, I would contend that not nearly enough time has been given to teachers and our other educational personnel to review and, for review and implementation of the standards, much less the time needed to prepare for these high-stakes assessments. My concern level goes up when I sense the breadth, depth, and high-stakes nature of these assessments when, I would contend, there has been limited time to fully understand, much less create content around the new standards. Testing, even high-stakes testing, may be appropriate, but not without adequate time to review, create, review again, reassess how the, quote, "in the classroom" process is going. It seems to me that educators need adequate time to, one, review the new material acquired to teach, excuse me. Number one, review the new material acquired to teach the new standards and contextualize them for their classroom. Two, understand and deploy the new standards, refining their teaching process as needed. And three, focus on the classroom. What is working, what is not? How can we support the frontline educators' efforts to contextualize and personalize the lessons while still achieving strong results with rigorous standards? In a recent Dispatch article, our governor said this. Is the, quote, "Is the test good?" Well, I don't know. If the test is goofy, we'll just throw it out. I think we have too many tests, end quote. I think the governor is right. Critics have argued that the process of developing the standards was secretive and that they invite federal government intrusion, stifle flexibility and creativity among teachers and students. If that is the case, whether we believe that or not, we need more time to dig into the standards, learn how to teach them, and so that we can provide the appropriate support, teachers, staff, certainly in the classroom students. In sum, in sum, in sum, as Legislative Liaison and speaking for myself, I will continue to push for community involvement and investment in our standards and curriculum choices. And most especially, continue to pursue our legislators to be more realistic and responsive to the seemingly unending and ill-conceived push toward high-stakes testing without regard to appropriate time for standards implementation and review at the classroom level. Or as I call it, we need more stability and less educational whiplash.
Now, does anybody have any comments they'd like to make about that? I do. I thought you would.
No, I'm not going to start.
No?
No. I will. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Dr. Nestor Baker. I will not start.
I want to focus on the testing too, and I very much appreciate this first update that you've given. And if we have you update on all the legislation, we'll never leave. So you'll have to pick and choose which ones to identify as most important. And this one is extraordinarily important to the district. The amount of testing that our children undergo, the incredible pressure that comes with that testing flies in the face of everything that I believe effective education is. I'm not saying I don't like tests. Tests are necessary in their place. But I feel that we have gone way overboard in this state. And I think that our children are suffering from it and will continue to suffer from it. And I do not want to see the State of Ohio's education system devolve into a series of lessons that are designed to meet a test rather than tests that are designed to focus on lessons. With that said, it's important to know that Dr. Kellogg has had some legislative conversations. I have had some legislative conversations. I know that the legislators are hearing from other educators, and I know they're hearing from some parents and some community members. I also know they're not hearing from enough because it's far too easy to dismiss a few of us. And it has become far too easy to dismiss educators. And I would hope that we see, see people rise up and speak out about what effective education is and what effective local education is. Ohio's had standards for years now. We do have the Common Core now in math and language arts. I do not love them, but I do not hate them. I think that they need tweaked. I have concerns about a number of issues that I found with them. And I absolutely, wholeheartedly agree with what Rick was saying, that they were thrust upon us very quickly. The implementation came to us incredibly rapidly. And the high stakes that go with them have come so quickly that it has been impossible for most districts, most teachers, most students, most families to adjust and to ascertain what will truly lead to success because we don't even know what's going to be tested appropriately. We have to make our voices heard. And it's not enough for the people at this table to do so. It's important that we do, and we do. But we have to, as a community, if it means something to us, we have to stand up and speak. Thank you, Rick.
Anything you'd like to say?
I, I would. I, you know, as, as most folks know, in the last few months, I come from a different angle. And I look at this from a corporate standpoint, especially in a role where I depend upon empirical evidence. I'm always confused by the topic of standardized testing in the state of Ohio. And the reason is, is that if you, if you participate in the community in education, and especially if you're on the Board of Education, you end up spending a lot of time researching this and, and these curricular subjects. this and these curricular subjects. What I find very, very strange is, is I can look at tons and tons of studies about all different types of curricular inputs, from arts in our schools, to introduction to foreign languages early in education, to early intervention, and each one of them can be shown to contribute directly to a student's success. I have yet to find a single piece of evidence that would even suggest that the standardized test system in the state of Ohio contributes one bit to academic performance. Not one. And I would invite anybody to show me one that does. I'm a strong, many people know this, I am a strong proponent for community standards-based curriculum. And I am very, very frustrated with a number of activities that seem to drive us towards this testing space, when frankly, being both a friend and a family member of a number of upper-tier college recruiters, every one of them will tell you that our state standardized tests have virtually no bearing on the acceptance of those students to their colleges. As a matter of fact, it's the high-stakes test that we're used to when we went to school. It's the ACT and the SAT. Thank you.
And just to tag on that very quickly, there is no empirical data that proves, that was even done regarding Common Core before it was thrust upon us. It was just said, "This is going to raise the standards. This is going to raise the bar." And yet, you know, here we are, as a state, bought into it, but it's being looked at and right now. If you call your legislators, this is the time to be speaking up, and believe me, I do, and go to meetings, because Common Core, I'm afraid, is not what we think it's going to be. And time will, time will tell us, but the biggest issue with our students are these tests, and they're being tested to death. We have now 1,001 hours of instruction at the high school level. A lot of that time is being used in testing, and that is, that's not like it used to be. That's not right. They're not learning other things. The teachers are having to teach to that test. And this is my opinion now, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board, but we are actually working with our teachers to train them to teach Common Core. So, here we are, you know, we hire teachers, and yet, we have to retrain them. Okay, end of the lecture.
Let me just thank you for allowing me to really take longer than should. Thank you for listening, and that was just great debate. It is really important that, if you have opinions about all of this, the legislators hear from us. And if they hear from you all, I think it makes, I want to say it makes maybe a bigger What I'd like you to hear is really, I even hesitated to use some of the terms that I used. The one I want to leave with Dr. Kellogg is just the process of perhaps bringing parents' community closer into the process, just the investment, involvement, and curricular stuff for feedback prior to, and if you have a sense of that.
That's not a foreign concept. In previous positions I've had, oftentimes, as teachers, as the experts develop the local curriculum, we put that on display for a time period for publics to come in and take a look at it. Same thing with instruction materials. Before they came to the board for final adoption or review, we had a public period. I think state law may have been revised to call for that. One of the versions of one of the bills, at some of the time, I think something said that. But it is something that I think would be important. We're in the process of looking at a curriculum adoption cycle post-new state standards implementation, because, you know, the interesting thing is, a critic might say, "Well, what do you mean? You didn't notice this coming? This has been coming for three or four years." But, the time period it takes to take a system this size and implement a new curriculum, so we have teachers in the system right now at various levels who just got their new curriculum based on the standards last year, and the new assessments are this spring. That's too short a time period. And I appreciate the sense that, particularly the focus on the classroom piece about our teachers having a chance to really wrestle with this stuff and understand it really well. And even time to wrestle with the new assessments, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not a critic of the design of the assessments or upping the rigor and the online, I'm just a critic of the timeframe. We're not giving our educators a fair chance to be well-prepared to take care of the kids. And as I talk to teachers, that's the fear. "I just got my new books. I just got my new curriculum, and now there's an assessment? Whoa." I know I sat down, and you'll hear, here's a plug for the board meeting in October, I'm going to talk about our new local report card. And as I told a reporter today, it's hard to set academic goals for next year in a fog of change, because the entire system's based on assessments that won't exist next year, that will be different next year than they are today. So, how do I set benchmarks? I don't know what our fifth-grade score is going to look like next year compared to this year, because I don't know what the test is going to do. So, we're in a foggy place here. We need time. I do know that the state has built in a, kind of a buffer year in terms of accountability. I've lived through that buffer accountability before, and all the scores end up in the paper anyway, so, you know, the public awareness piece, contacting legislators, certainly myself and my staff would make ourselves available, anybody in the public has specific questions about any of this, and I do appreciate the board's diligence and understanding issues. That's what I appreciate the most, is your leadership and your willingness to roll up your sleeves, understand this stuff, and not just rubber-stamp things from your staff, our administrative team, or from legislators. I do think we need to roll up our sleeves and be critics and push back and engage our public. So, yes, on one, I agree. And on two, I'm okay with standards. We can take care of our local curriculum, but I'm really pushing on these assessment pieces. So, thank you for your diligence on this issue.
Dates, times, and locations of next meetings, and in between times, you can call the legislators. We will meet in regular session on Monday, October 13th, and Monday, October 27th, at 6:00, as usual, here at the Early Learning Center. And with that, could I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Bart, would you call the roll for adjournment?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Yeah, I'm going to a legislative meeting.